I don't think that everyone who casts a vote for a Democrat, nor is every Democrat, a Marxist. But the Marxist official Democrat Party platform can, by and large, only seem to gain any traction by means of fraud, unlawfulness, manufactured crises, and a bevy of any other unethical means. Anyone with two brain cells to rub together would find, among other things, most, if not all, Democrat-proposed district maps laughable. If this partisan committee chooses to rush through unconstitutional maps, you will have chosen party and nepotism over your neighbors. At least, I can say with a high degree of certainty that if these folks and others like them lose their voice, they won't resort to property destruction, arson, looting, or anarchy, the so-called "Voice of the Voiceless." You'll see them at polling places and knocking on doors in your own neighborhoods on a campaign for office of their own.
My name is Dan Campion, 11303 232nd Avenue in Trever, Wisconsin. I'm also a village trustee, and I'm here to speak regarding a few issues that we may want to bring to your attention regarding the maps for the supervisor positions. Number one, we're a village of almost 15,000 people. We're serviced by four different types of supervisors, four different supervisors. We also have two different high schools, and we have five different grade schools. I bring this up to your attention because when it comes to elections, we have three polling places. Those three polling places have to manage 10 different ballots. And it's because of the school district, because of the wards that are created, because of the supervisor positions, the supervisor positions themselves, and also overlaps because we're also in the process of 2027. Part of the Village of Salem Lakes will be annexed into the Village of Paddock Lake from an agreement that happened in 2007. So I'm wanting you to look at those instances and try to follow something whereby you're not dicing up the Village of Salem Lakes more than, certainly, we could do less than what we have today, but don't do any more. It puts a big strain on our staff, our personnel, and it's truly the right of the people to vote. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Nedweski. I live in Pleasant Prairie. I'll refrain from providing my home address for safety reasons. Today, I had the privilege of testifying in support of Assembly Bill 378 at a hearing with the Wisconsin Assembly Committee on Government Accountability and Oversight. This bill promotes transparency in public school funds, and it receives considerable bipartisan support. I'm disappointed to say that what I witnessed in the redistricting committee here on September 8th was exactly the opposite. I'm disgusted and ashamed that our local leaders cannot set aside their partisan differences and do what is right and fair with honesty and transparency. In the September 8th meeting, supervisors exchanged contentious statements that everyone here knows who is Democrat and who is Republican. Well, that may be true among members of the board, but the average resident of Kenosha County has no idea which of you lean to the left or to the right. Most people would struggle to even name their supervisor. However, at any given time, every single member of this community has the right to attend an open public meeting without intimidation, and their desire to be informed of what is happening in local government should be encouraged, not criticized. I never imagined that elected officials could be so utterly and blatantly dishonest directly to the faces of the public. When confronted with some important questions by their colleagues, committee members in this meeting flat-out refused to answer, repeatedly. When the subject of transparency was raised, it seemed as if it might be a term they never heard of. Though some of you might find this difficult to believe, you are not smarter than the people you represent. The proposed A, B, and C maps are all grossly biased and unfair. There is clear legal precedent that deviation over 10% is unconstitutional, yet even corporation council sat there and straight-up refused to acknowledge that. In several instances, Map C unnecessarily splits neighborhoods and municipalities, forcing residents who have common interests to be represented by multiple supervisors who may not be in agreement. This is certainly not a form of best practices. The data input into this software and the map drawing tool itself are widely available to the general public on multiple platforms, and quite frankly, a fourth grader could have drawn more fair maps than the ones being recommended today. But you would rather have us pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. I'm not afraid to call out the hypocrisy in this redistricting process. Stop treating the public like they don't know what is going on. I don't care what side you are on. It's insulting, it's offensive, and it will get us nowhere nearer to unity. Reject Map C, go back to the drawing board, and please stop trying to ram this through before the next election. Do it right, do it fair, and be the leaders we expect you to be. Thank you.
Mary Magdalena Moser, 2106 73rd Street. So now we have a third map that doesn't draw an elected supervisor out of his district, and that marvelous feat was accomplished in three short days. Do you know what that tells the citizens of Kenosha County? That all of us who said we were being lied to by our elected officials were right. You could draw reasonable maps in a short amount of time, and you're choosing not to because you think you can get away with it. It also tells us that everything we've heard from county officials since the riots, looting, and arson of August 2020 about caring about Kenosians who live in those neighborhoods was nothing more than empty promises and lies. We know this because every map so far has surgically removed every tiny bit of the 2020 riot zones from other districts and crammed them into three supervisors' districts. If anyone involved in this gerrymandering disgrace really cared about us, you would have divided up the riot zones even more so that we could have additional aid and advocacy. But you didn't. The first chance you got, you washed your hands of our problem neighborhoods and shoved us off on somebody else. How is it possible that Racine County has managed to produce twice as many redistricting maps in the same amount of time? Probably because they didn't waste two whole weeks lying to citizens about how hard the YSLR software was to use. Here's the important thing: We all know you lied, and we know you're continuing to lie. And for every citizen who's here tonight calling you out for this relentlessly pathetic lying, just know that there's 100 more, or 1,000 more, or 10,000 more Kenosians out there just like us who also know you've been lying. And if there's one thing that unites us, it's that not a single one of us can abide lying hypocrites.
My name is Catherine Hutcheson. My address is 5400 Washington Road, Kenosha. I'm just going to make very brief comments. I'm a relative newcomer to Kenosha County, so I'm not familiar with a lot of the details and the politics. But I left Cook County two years ago, in large part, to escape one-party rule and the disastrous consequences of decades of one-party rule. And I saw firsthand the way it breeds corruption and lack of accountability. And one of the reasons I chose Kenosha County as my home was because it's more politically diverse, because it has two viable parties, because it's not Cook County. So please, I did not move here to move to Illinois North. Don't become another Cook County. Please do not fix what isn't broken.
I'm Brian Baushaw, 25910 31st Streets, Freiten. First, gentlemen, first let me apologize for what I'm about to say. Why do you have the Gestapo here? There were no sheriffs here for the last county board meeting. There are no sheriff's police here Friday night for the meeting, and that was fairly contentious. What are you afraid of, your citizens? Sorry, gentlemen. So, brings me to what I'm here to speak about: redistricting. I attended the redistricting committee meeting on Friday, September 10. From the opening of the meeting, the attending residents couldn't hear, just like tonight. You're down here in the pit. We can't understand a word or hear a word that you say. Microphone system is so low, and again, it's the same thing. I must draw the conclusion that supervisors intentionally do not want the citizens to hear what they're considering. I was surprised Friday night when mysteriously out of the ether appeared Map C after public comment on Maps A and B, that we never had an opportunity to see Map C, yet all of a sudden, mysteriously, here it is. Magic. It's an amazing thing. Map C was addressed quickly as presented as, "It's addressed all the concerns. Let's move to accept it. We'll go ahead and approve this map." I was astonished. You couldn't put any time into even looking at it, to understanding it, to discussing it, in an open meeting. How can you move so fast to adopt a map in mere moments? The map presented appears to be designed to represent partisan party interests, not to represent the citizenry of Kenosha County. Others here tonight have and will continue to more eloquently discuss the ills of the map, the failings within it. So let me address something else. My wife says they're not going to like you. Mr. Boyd Frederick, the expression on your face throughout the meeting was of pure contempt. It said, "How dare the citizens be in your meeting," or worse, "How dare they question your committee work?" Council representative Friday evening was visibly and audibly angry at the public in attendance. That's absolutely unacceptable. You serve the public. Mr. Ron Frederick, your clumsy rebuttal to a request to add the supervisor's residence locations to the maps was dismissive, and quite honestly, I found it offensive, stating "our charges to draw a map," while maps often feature supporting elements. They're included on the maps. The request by Supervisor Nudo was to add a feature which would support understanding how the new map impacted the current supervisors, as the earlier maps simply eliminated currently elected supervisors by establishing arbitrary in what I find to be extremely partisan districts. Where was the overlay map that demonstrated the changes or modifications from the current map? I drew my own so I could try to understand where the changes were for my District 19. Where were the criteria presented, which, with the data that indicated that this map met or exceeded the constitutional requirements? Who drew these maps? And who does that cartographer report to? Because if he reports to a board member who is a partisan, who is pulling his puppet strings, I'd be terrified to be the drawer of that map. Is my job in jeopardy if I get it wrong? It's a terrible question, but somebody really needs to ask it. These are critical questions, as it appears that these maps were drawn with clear political bias. Voters will be disenfranchised as communities of interest are split? Why? To protect or to solidify votes for specific supervisors of your preferred parties? Is it by intention that this board and its leadership appear to be overtly biased, utilizing its authority for partisan games, acting with contempt toward those who are your constituents? They're sitting here. Were you elected to execute your responsibilities as partisans promoting party politics, or were you elected to represent all of the constituents in the districts and in Kenosha County? All its citizens and its interests? We seem to have the tale of two Kenoshas on display, divided east and west in '94, and further divided by rabid party partisanship. This perspective is amplified by the actions of the supervisors, who do not appear to respect the citizens of Kenosha County, and that means all of its citizens, not just those of one party. From what I've witnessed, your conduct is representable, and you must be held to account. Your actions are overtly unethical, clearly partisan, and irresponsible, as the maps under consideration appear to be illegal. Voting to adopt this Map C is an affront to Kenosha County. So to borrow a phrase from a young lady, shame on you.
My name's Catherine Woods. I'm just going to say I've lived here my entire life, and I was only going to say a few things, but as I was listening, some of the things kind of came to my mind. And first of all, I'd like to say, I'm 60 years old, and I've lived here my entire life. And I used to say, "I love Kenosha, I'm proud of Kenosha, please move to Kenosha, Kenosha's great." I can't wait to get out of Kenosha now. And I have to say that some of the body language that I'm watching from you people here, you should be ashamed of yourselves. I mean, this is professionalism, and I don't see it. Some of you are, I will say that, some of you are not. Some of you are just sitting back, like, just get it over with, let's get on, we're going to vote, we already made our decisions, let's do it, kind of like the Kenosha Unified School District. But my question is, is why are you in such a hurry to do this? You're doing it within a month of starting it. What's the hurry? That's my question. I know I'm not going to get an answer, but I just want to make other people aware of this. Why is there only one person drawing this up? From what I understood, Mr. Jim Cruiser was the one that pretty much drew this up and authorized it. Why are we letting just one person make all the decisions? I went to school with Jim. He's no brainiac. Yeah, he's a smart guy, but he's not a mastermind of anything. He's just like us. So I want to know why it's just him. So I'm asking you, please, go back to the drawing board and make it more constitutional. Do you remember what that word means, "constitutional"? I hope you do. And please stop trying to snowball us. We're smart people here. Like I said, Mr. Cruiser is not any smarter than me. I'm not any smarter than him. I don't think anybody's any smarter than anybody here when it comes to certain things. We all have our strengths and our weaknesses. So please, let's just try to work together on this and make it fair and equal to everyone. Thank you.
I live at 992 132nd Avenue in Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin. Bottom line up front, I'm asking all the county board supervisors to vote against this ridiculous map. It looks like Swiss cheese, or Colby Jack, or something. It makes no sense to have little islands in certain districts. Another point is, I thought the procedure, when I watched it on the video this afternoon, the 910 meeting, I believe it was, where the committee approved the map. It makes no sense to have public input to something that's not seen. That was ridiculous. I think the chairman should feel embarrassed about how that committee was rung. It makes no sense to get public input to something that's not seen. A lot of my reasons that I'm speaking here today is because of the nonconstitutionality or the intent of the Constitution not being followed on these redistricting maps. It's not contiguous. The districts are not concise. The map is an administrative nightmare, I think, for the clerks to arrange for voting maps for the public. The deviation is over 12%. How can Racine County, that seems pretty similar, County have like around a 1% deviation? And I can see why this map is so difficult to avoid 12% deviation, is when you have islands of districts populated inside other islands in zigzaggy lines. So again, I hope the county board supervisors will do the right thing and vote against this hurried and unconstitutional map.
My name is Barbara Griffin, 2007 81st Street, Kenosha, Wisconsin. I am coming here as a sixth-generation Kenosian, and I am ashamed of what this county board has done and what the committee has done. We expect better of our public servants. For a republic to survive, we need to have an educated voter, and things need to be done in the light. When the motion was made to say where the districts were and who were their supervisors, that should have been done. We, the public, want to make educated decisions, because we want the best for this county, be it a Republican, be it a Democrat, be it independent. We want what's best for Kenosha, not what's best for the gentlemen and ladies sitting behind here. We want what's best for Kenosha. So please, go back and do some soul-searching. Is these maps really what's best for Kenosha, or is it what's best for you? Please, represent the people. We're begging you. Thank you.
Eric Meadows, Pleasant Prairie. I want to ask the question, which way do you face? Which way do you face? The architecture of this room makes it feel like you are opposed to us, you are facing us. That shows a fundamental misunderstanding of what a board of directors is supposed to do for any organization. A board of directors doesn't sit on their side of this bar and dictate to us what we do. That is not your job. That's not what we hired you to do. Instead, a board of directors should be sitting on our side of the wall, facing the community, saying, "This is what the community wants." You are facing the wrong direction. You are dictating to us what you think we should do instead of representing what we want. Face the direction with us. We hired you for this job to represent us, but you are ignoring us because you think you know better. You do not know better. We hired you based on the values that we hold. Therefore, we have a right for you to represent us. I don't care what any of you believe. I don't care what you think. That's not your job to tell us what you believe. Your job is to represent what we believe. Please, represent the people of Kenosha that hired you. Thank you.
I guess I am not the last one over here, but I'm not going to repeat what everybody is saying in here. What I would like to encourage you is to go back to the drawing board, redraw the maps, show us what you propose, work with your colleagues, both sides of the aisle, and show us what you guys can do. I also moved from Illinois, escaping a one-party rule. I'm tired of it. We are tired of it. So let's go back to the drawing board and do your job.
My name is Linda Seymour, and I actually had no intention of speaking. I just came here to get to know a little bit more about it, but I think everyone here has done a wonderful job of eloquently stating exactly how a majority of us feel. And I think it's really silly, if you really look at the premise of it all, is to let the very, it's like letting the fox in the hen house. Why would we let you guys decide how the district map gets determined, when you've actually changed how the map is to accommodate where some of you live? Now, that seems rather silly. If you want to do a representative map, then you should be looking at the constituents and what their needs are, and who would best represent them. So it just, it tells me that this isn't even being thought out very carefully, and I'm just asking you to maybe look at this again and think twice about how you're approaching this, because one of the things that we do in our household, I have five kids, maintaining peace is not very easy when they were little, and if there was one piece of the pie left and there was two kids that wanted it, this is how we handled it. And I suggest you actually look at it in your way of approaching it, the same way. If there's one piece, one big piece left, one gets to cut it, the other one gets to pick the piece that they want. So maybe each side, if you want to, because it's very apparent that you're handling it in a very political way, if you want to do it that way, then one party draws up their map, the other one draws up the other one's map, and you figure out something in the middle that comes up as a fair compromise, because it's apparent this isn't going on. And I'm really disappointed that grown-ups who we have elected to represent us are only representing themselves. So thank you.
Dawn Santoro. Well, I could stand up here and tell you everything that's wrong with the maps, but you already know from everything that you've heard. I'm just a mom, so I'm not really good at speeches and so forth, so forth. But what I'm here to ask everyone here is to, I feel like there's this side and there's this side, when we are supposed to be all united, and we shouldn't be on this level. Everybody should be working together. We all know what's going on in our country, and it's, pardon me for swearing, but it's scary as hell. I want my son to grow up in a free country where we have choices and democracy, not dictatorship. So I'm here to ask you all to listen with your heart and not with maybe some misgivings from the past, Republicans, Democrats, you know, gerrymandering, who's doing this, who's doing that. We have to stop this mentality, and we have to work together. I know this is just maps and redistricting, but you know what? If we don't work together, we're going to lose our country. Okay? I don't want to fight with you. I don't have ill feelings toward any of you. I want your children and your grandchildren to grow up in a free country, you know? This is what it's all about. I just want us to unite. I really never understood, united we stand until now, everything that's been going on. If we don't stand united, all of us, then we're going to lose. And it's not just us, it's our kids, it's our grandkids, you know? We really, really need to come together on this. We're just asking for fairness and to hear us and to work with us. We have time. This doesn't have to get done right now, and we all know it. Okay? Please. I'm really, really asking you to unite us, to stand united, us together, Democrats, Republicans, independents. Let's make this work, okay, for everyone, okay? Thank you.